The December 4th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At the start of each council meeting, we have an open podium period of time when Eden Prairie city residents can address the city council on issues related to city government. Typically, our meetings are the first and third Tuesdays of the month, and this open podium period of time is from approximately 6:30 to 6:55. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits after scheduled speakers, then I will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. This portion of time is not recorded nor is it televised. Again, if you have any questions, please contact the city manager's office.
I'd like you to close your eyes and see if you can recite that back.
Yeah, I can.
Totally by memory, since you've done it now.
I've done it a lot of times.
Thirteen years, times fifteen.
Definitely. All right. We're going to call HRA meeting to order first. I'd like to call that meeting to order. Roll call. Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Here. I'll join you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Chair Tara Lukens. Here. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the HRA meeting held on September 4th of 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. The next item is a motion to adopt a resolution certifying the 2019 HRA property tax levy to be $200,000 and approving the 2019 HRA budget of $200,000 as reviewed by the council. Mr. Getcho, do you have anything to add to that?
Just simply, members of the HRA, that in September, you set the same exact amount as your preliminary levy and budget. This amount of $200,000 has been the HRA's budget for well more than a decade and meets the needs of the cost within the HRA for housing and redevelopment.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution certifying the 2019 HRA property tax levy to be $200,000 and approving the 2019 HRA budget of $200,000 as reviewed by the council. And when it's seconded, if I could just, if it could be opened up just for a comment or two.
Sure. Okay. Any discussion, Mr. Case?
Just that I recall, Kathy, I think it was you last year, that said, hey, at some point, maybe we ought to look at increasing this. And even though, Mr. Getcho, I know that you said that our needs are being met by this, and I agree with that based on our current list of needs, but I know that we have tremendous needs for affordable housing, and many of those ideas came out of the campaigns of all of us. And there are different ways that we've looked and talked about possibilities of subsidizing, funding, incentivizing, whatever. And this might be an interesting fund to consider. I don't know about all the legality to it, but it just seems like that might be something that, let's not come up to next year again and just, you know, rotefully arbitrarily get that at 200,000 again, just to look at, or at least to study or have that conversation.
Absolutely. If I could just comment that, so this is one piece in all the housing work that we do. So we have, you know, funds available and accounts available and tax increment financing funds or pooled tax increment financing funds and other funds that we do want to leverage for affordable housing needs. This is one of those, but we will absolutely review that in 2019 as we prepare our 2020 and 2021 budget.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. The next item is a resolution approving the modified budget for Tiff District Number 18.
Thank you, members of the HRA. This is, this is a housekeeping item. You'll see also a public hearing at the council level that's needed after the HRA action. And this is to modify the budget for Tax Increment District 18, which is the Heights at Valley View apartment project. It's a 186-unit affordable housing project, and we need to adjust the budget within this project pursuant to state auditor requirements.
Is there a motion?
To adopt the resolution approving the modified budget for Tax Increment Financing District Number 18, Heights of Valley View Apartment Project.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the HRA meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned. All right. We will start the council meeting, and it begins with proclamations and presentations typically. Tonight, we have a letter of recognition for former Eden Prairie Police Officer Patrick Kenyon.
Mayor, my apologies. I forgot there is another presentation on the agenda that I forgot to get on here in time. Mayor, I apologize. We have the Lions Club that have a brief presentation beforehand. My apologies.
All right. Thank you.
I am Gary Watkins. I'm the president of the Eden Prairie Lions, 6865 Rosemary Road. I would like to introduce Mike, Mike Gust, who is our club historian and parliamentarian. He has a little, a little background on the award that we intend to get to present.
Thank you, Gary. Tonight, again, is a special night, a special occasion for the members of the Eden Prairie Lions Club. We are honoring a member of our community who has generously devoted time and abilities and efforts that have helped improve the quality and life for all of us. Tonight, we're going to give away the Melvin Jones Fellowship Award. The Melvin Jones Fellowship Award is the highest honor Lions Club's International Foundation can bestow upon an individual. It may be awarded to both Lions and non-Lions, men and women, whose lives have been characterized by the dedication to serve. Fellows receive a handsome plaque and the knowledge that he or she is recognized as a true patriot of humanity and an individual whose actions and ideas embody the objectives and spirit of Lionism and the foundation. The fellowship is not an award, rather, it is a recognition given to a humanitarian. The members of the Eden Prairie Lions Club have chosen to show Mayor Nancy Tyra Lukens that we appreciated her work by honoring Nancy with the Melvin Jones Fellowship. A life of community service. Mayor Nancy Tyra Lukens is by far Eden Prairie's longest-serving mayor. By the end of the current term in December 2018, she will have served 13 years as mayor. Combined with seven years she served as city council member, Mayor Tyra Lukens has dedicated two decades of her life to elected public service for her community and the Southwest Metro. We are thankful for the indication and sacrifice that Nancy and her family have made for the city of Eden Prairie. The Eden Prairie Lions Club is proud to recognize Mayor Nancy Tyra Lukens with the Fellowship Award. President of the Eden Prairie Lions Club, again, is our Gary Watkins. Will present to you a personal inscribed wall plaque and a lapel pin and identity there as a Melvin Jones Fellow. Congratulations.
Thanks, guys.
This is really very nice. Thank you. I'm very humbled by this. This is a wonderful commendation to receive, and I'm going to ask you more a little bit later about the difference between the fellowship and the award, but I kind of get the gist of it. Thank you so much. It's been my pleasure to serve. All right. Now?
Yes, now, Mayor. My apologies for overlooking that earlier presentation.
Chief Weber.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. It's a great pleasure for me to come before you tonight to recognize a former police officer from Eden Prairie. If I could call Patrick Kenyon up, I'd like to read a letter of recognition. On July 24th, 2018, retired Eden Prairie Police Department Officer Patrick Kenyon was shopping in Jerry's Grocery Store when he learned that a woman had collapsed in the front of the store. Mr. Kenyon ran to his vehicle in the parking lot and retrieved a medical supply bag. Prior to officers and firefighters arriving on the scene, Mr. Kenyon had defibrillated the woman three times using an AED located inside the Jerry's store. Mr. Kenyon continued CPR with other first responders, and by the time paramedics had placed the woman in the ambulance, she was breathing on her own. The woman has since made a full recovery, and she and her family are thankful for Mr. Kenyon's quick thinking and life-saving actions. On behalf of a grateful community, I hereby award Patrick Kenyon with the Eden Prairie Police Department's Letter of Recognition.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So, Mayor's asked me to read the next commendation. It's for river rescue by mosquito control district employees. In addition, Chief Espenson and Chief Weber will also now present this to two civilians, Adam, is it Frye and Casey Herman, for helping to save the life of a woman they pulled from the Minnesota River in August. After each award is read, the mayor is, oh, sorry, the mayor is welcome to stand there and join, which she is.
Great. If Adam Frye and Casey Herman would come forward. Welcome. On the afternoon of August 20, 2018, Eden Prairie Dispatch received a call from two boaters who reported that they were on the Minnesota River and had just pulled a woman out of the water and into their boat. Adam Frye and Casey Herman were working for the Minnesota, or the Metropolitan Mosquito Control District in their boat when they noticed the woman floating in the river. They yelled to her to see if she was okay, but she did not respond. When the woman started to go underwater, the men reached down and grabbed her arms in order to pull her into their boat. The woman struggled, but after several attempts, they were able to get her inside their boat. Once in the boat, the men observed that the woman did not speak and appeared to be in an agitated and altered state. In an effort to keep her safe, the men attempted to hold her down on the floor of the boat while waiting for help. The men had to free float down the river as they were unable to drive the boat while also assisting the woman. After floating for 45 minutes, the men met up with Eden Prairie police officers and firefighters who took the woman into their boat. The men followed the rescue boat to shore and met with officers and paramedics. Once onshore, the men learned that the woman had been reported missing by her parents. When her parents learned that she had been found and how she had been rescued, they were incredibly thankful for Mr. Frye and Mr. Herman's and their actions they took to have, to save their daughter. Mr. Frye and Mr. Herman acted courageously in a potentially dangerous situation. Their quick actions, compassion for the victim, and ability to remain calm helped save this woman's life. On behalf of a grateful community, we hereby award the city of Eden Prairie's Commendation Award to Adam Frye and Casey Herman.
Those are always such nice awards to give out, and we really appreciate our residents and our people that work within our city that do these great deeds. The next item is a presentation on the I-494 corridor project, and I guess Adam Lutea, is that, okay, will be making the presentation?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor.
Okay.
Andrew.
Oh, what did I say?
You said Andrew.
Oh, Andrew. Yeah, it does say Andrew. You're right.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, we appreciate inviting Mendat again to give a project update on the upcoming I-494 expansion project. So there's been quite a history on this project since 2001. That was the first environmental impact assessment or environmental document that was approved by the Federal Highway Administration, and quite a few projects have been built in that document, and the last one being the Lindell Avenue Bridge of I-494. So by that time, it had become evident that the department had to revise the environmental of the planning vision for the corridor. So starting in May of this year, we embarked on revising the environmental document and getting a project ready for construction possibly in the year 2022. So I'm going to give a brief update on how that work is going, including what has been done so far by getting the purpose and need statement developed and approved by the Federal Highway Administration, then going into phase two where we are looking at what the final build or recommended alternative would be. So the project limits that are being reviewed for environmental clearance are from 169 on the west side in Eden Prairie all the way to the river crossing by the airport. So the goals of this study include bringing the asset conditions of the public asset conditions to par with, with the deterioration that had been happening for the last 20 years. So that would include improving the pavement and bridge conditions plus the retaining walls in the corridor, improving pedestrian accommodations across the highway, knowing that it has seemed to be an impediment for residents that are living adjacent to the We would also like to improve transit advantage on the corridor by, at the minimum, accommodating bus shoulders through the study area that is from 169 to the river. There are a few projects that are being developed, some are ready for construction, one being the Highway 77 underpass in the city of Richfield, and also the Dakota County is planning a managed lane facility on Highway 77. So as that plan progresses, we would want to be ready on I-494 to, to receive such a facility. Assets, we have both, actually, three bridges, Nicolet Avenue, Portland Avenue, and 12th Avenue that are due for replacement. And as we plan for the replacing of those bridges, we would want to make sure that they accommodate any expansion on the corridor. So what we have been able to accomplish to date, as I mentioned earlier, is getting the purpose and need statement developed and approved by the Federal Highway Administration. There was quite a bit of effort that was put in collecting data that identified, identified existing safety, safety concerns on the corridor, mobility in terms of congestion that is being experienced by travelers on the corridor, and with congestion that comes travel time and reliability. I'd also mention both bridge and pavement conditions that are due for upgrades. So the action that we would want to propose is to expand the highway. And that expansion might be either a general purpose lane, or it could be a managed lane or a mean pass lane, as we call it. So as we engage the public and our local, our local partners in the development process, that is the answer that, that is the question that we're asking and needing direction on. The pedestrian and bicycle connectivity that is also continuing to be a goal for the department, including as we replace the bridges, we'd want to make sure that the new facilities are accommodating pedestrian facilities on them. The pedestrian facilities could be trails or sidewalks or a combination of both. We know that the, as the corridor has continued to expand in the past, the existing storm drain system was, is actually, is, is over capacity. So to meet water treatment rules or requirements, we would need to upgrade the drainage system as well. So to get the purpose and need approved, there was quite an extensive effort done in getting public comment, public comments on, on what we were proposing. That included both pop-up events at farmers markets and other public events. There was an online survey that was done in October. The online survey has produced about 3,200 comments. That was way more than we expected comparing it to an open house, a public open house. And the pop-up events, we received close to 3,800 conversations or comments from those pop-up events. And the results that we, we got from, from that was that the users of this facility are pretty much in line with what the data shows us. They are agreeing that there is quite a bit of congestion that is being experienced currently. A few safety issues, including crashes, especially on 35W and I-494 interchange and segments between 35W up to Highway 77 because of the proximity of the interchanges in that, in that segment, that area of highway. The, the public also agreed with us that there was, there is need to maintain our infrastructure, including bridges and roads. Pedestrian and bicycle connectivity was a, was, was a huge comment that we received, especially on the one-on-one interactions that the department had with the public. So we are continuing with all, with all these needs, what some primary, but another secondary, in developing the recommended build alternative for the project. So this slide kind of speaks to, so the bigger the words speaks to how, what was more prevalent in the comments that were received from the public. They did acknowledge that they would want to see added capacity on I-494, be it general purpose or managed lanes. The last statement out here, they also acknowledged that the closeness of interchanges does cause, does cause congestion and safety issues along the highway. And we are continuing with this goal that we would want, we would recommend consolidating access at, at Portland, so removing the owner of ramps on Nicolet and 12th Avenue and consolidating it on Portland Avenue. But again, we need city resolutions from Bloomington and Richfield to have that moving forward. So that's what we were able to accomplish in the last six to eight months. Now, we're going into a phase of running models, traffic models, and engaging the public further in defining what they would want to see as being constructed on the corridor. So from now on, from now through the summer of 2019, that is the process that we're going to be under with hosting a couple of public events, public engagement events, including open houses, one-on-one meetings with both the general public and businesses along the corridor. We anticipate to have the environmental document approved in the spring of 2020. What that then does is it paves or gives us the green light to have a project be under construction after the environmental document is approved. I did mention at the beginning of the meeting that we would want to have, construction start in 2022, but some of the considerations that we are also having is that for such a big project, it might be a three, four, five-year construction period. So we are looking at other alternatives that might, that we might be able to get some work done before 2022, and that type of work would not reduce mainline capacity or mainline lanes. So as we continue with the project development, that is the, some of the answers that we would be looking for. So a couple of alternatives that we are considering, as always, the general rule of thumb is, there is an option of always doing nothing, and we don't know how the public would be receptive of that, but by the federal highway requirement, that is always an alternative. I did mention general purpose lanes as an option. Managed lanes are very similar to an HOV lane or, HOV would be high occupancy vehicles, so having more than one person in the vehicle. So a mean, a mean pass lane, a managed lane is pretty much very similar to an HOV lane. The only difference is that the mean pass lanes are restricted during the peak periods, but of the peak period, so from, I would say, from some segments in the metro area, the peak period is between 6:30 to 9:30 in the AM or 3:00 to 6:00 in the PM. So during that time, those lanes are restricted for either riders that have the transporters or more than one in the vehicle. But outside that period, then, it really functions as a general purpose lane. The other option that we're also considering is the barrier separated express lane, and that's just a requirement that the Federal Highway Administration has asked us to consider. We are also proposing reconstructing the I-35W I-494 interchange. And as part of that, as part of that project, we have received funding through the state legislature to build a phase, if just one phase of that vision, and that phase includes the northbound 35W ramp over eastbound, over westbound I-494. So to do that, we would, four, five bridges that will need to be replaced, and one of them being the 82nd Street Bridge in Bloomington. There are three, I'd say four new bridges that will have to be built, including removing a northbound to eastbound move that exits off Penn, so that, that, the new ramp wouldn't be able to access Penn Avenue. So that, that, the new ramp wouldn't be able to access Penn Avenue. I mentioned earlier that we are also considering removing access of Nicolet and 12th and consolidating it on Portland Avenue. So these are all the options that we are going to continue engaging the public on, getting their opinion on the type of project that they would want to see. So I've mentioned that to help manage the, lessen the impacts on 494, we are considering breaking, breaking up the project into multiple phases, including work that would not reduce capacity on 494 during construction. So those would be the early work packages. And the good candidates that we have identified to date would be replacing the 12 Portland-Nicolet Avenue Bridges and the railroad bridge between, between Nicolet and Portland Avenue. There is also a possibility that Phase One of 494 and the 35W interchange could be rebuilt without reducing any impacts on 494. The, that interchange would be, one, one other reason would be that Metro Transit has a project that is building an underpass just west of 35W. The project is fully funded as of today, and they are planning to be under construction beginning in 2019, completing that project in 2021. The, the Metro Transit project will have lane shifts on 494, but it would not reduce lanes, so it will not have long-term lane closures on 494. Utility relocations are always a good candidate to have done before major highway construction starts. So to help us achieve these goals, we are considering, so we, I would say the department usually has three types of project delivery, delivery methods. Design build would be an option where we go through the planning phase and then get a contractor on board, and the contractor helps finish the final plans of the project as they're out there building. The early work packages would be a good candidate for that type of delivery method. Design bid build is when the department actually goes through the final plan development. And for the 2023 start of construction work pack, or phase, that is an option that we could consider. The last option would be the construction manager, general manager type of project delivery, where we have a contractor on board to help guide the final plan development. And that is usually used for complex projects. In this corridor, we are identifying one, and that would be the railroad bridge, because the railroad has indicated that they'd want their line to remain in service the whole time as we are replacing that bridge. So all these three options are still on the table, and through the spring of next year, we will be narrowing down again what the work packages are and the type of project delivery method we would be employing on each of those work packages. So the last slide that I have is kind of giving an idea of what the department has been looking at in terms of staging the big project in relation to the other projects in the, in the area. There is a couple of projects that are already ongoing. One, if you may be aware, is the 35W 194 project. That one is running through 2021. We do have the 35W over the Bitter River in, in Barnesville. That is also going to be going through 2021. So we wanted to make sure that those two projects were done before any work was being done on 494. However, there is also a pavement rehabilitation project just to the east of the river that runs all the way to close to 694 in, in Woodbury. That project will be continuing through 2020, and shortly after that, there will be a Highway Five concrete pavement repair job that is also going to be running from next year, 2019 through the year 2020. So once those projects get out of the way, then we can start construction on 494. There are other projects, as you see this map being busy, that we have, we have staged to follow the work on, on 494, one being the Highway 62 pavement rehabilitation job that would, that is now slated to happen in 2025 after our project is done. I should mention that there is a pavement rehab, rehabilitation project on Highway 77 that, that is also slated to start in 2019 and be done in 2020. So some of these projects, as they're happening concurrently, we are seeing, we are planning them to be mostly weekend or nights, I would say night walk, that wouldn't have major impacts on, on mainline traffic during the, I would say the, the morning hours. However, Highway Five, we know is going to have major traffic impact because it's, it's a more extensive project by having to remove concrete panels and replace them. So for engagement strategies, we are going to continue deploying online surveys. We have seen great participation from the public through those. However, we're also going to be hosting open houses as, as, as the project development continues. We are, we, we will have to meet with underrepresented communities adjusting to the corridors. We have identified those communities, and we are going to be reaching out to them, asking for meetings to present and introduce the project to them. We are meeting with, we have been invited to business chambers, city business chambers along the corridor, and meeting one-on-one with the big employers on the corridor as well. So with that, I'll leave it up for questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Lutte, for that overview. It sounds like there'll be a lot of work going on in the southwest and the south corridor of the city. Yeah, Councilmember, I've served on this committee for many, many years.
Yeah, so I'm chair of the 494 Corridor Commission, and we really appreciate MNDOT's efforts on this, and it's going to be a huge improvement to the whole, the whole southwest metro and beyond to get this work done. And our 494 Corridor Commission, we have a commuter services group, which is our, our staff, and they'll be assisting MNDOT with the communications piece of this and getting the word out to all of the, especially to the employers, because we have relationships with all the employers in that area. And so we'll get the message out to them, tell them how they can navigate during the construction process, and, and then we'll be helping commuters with their, with their commute and finding ways around, around this construction progress.
Wonderful. Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming out tonight to present this. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Andrew.
All right. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
So moved.
Second.
Anything to add or delete? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the council workshop held on Tuesday, November 13th?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held that same date?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections to those? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item is consent calendar. We have items A through W, a pretty long list. Mr. Rosso has something to add on item E.
Mayor, on the massage ordinance, it's always been interpreted that to have an enterprise license, you need to have a facility here in the city. You need to comply with the city zoning ordinances, and we made that explicit in the second reading, that you need a facility, a brick and mortar facility in the city.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move approval of items A to W on the consent calendar.
Second?
Second.
Any items to question, or you want to pull for discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Tonight, we have a few public hearings, four to be exact. The first one is a resolution approving the modified budget for tax increment financing District Number 18. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the same item that you took action on as HRA. So this is the same action at the city council level. We ask that you open a public hearing and then adopt the resolution following the public hearing.
Is there a presentation?
There is not.
Okay. All right. Any questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this Tiff financing district?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution approving the modified budget for tax increment financing District Number 18, Heights at Valley View Apartment Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is a resolution certifying the 2018 property tax levy, adopting the 2019 budget, and approving the 2019 HRA tax levy.
Mayor and council, thank you. I think there's a typo there, too.
I thought so.
No, good catch. It's 2019 levy, budget, and HRAs. Everything's 2019. And we do have a presentation on this item, and this is the, the time where we are seeking action on our budget and our levy for 2019. Finance Supervisor Tammy Wilson and I have a presentation, and then we will host a public hearing, and then staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, I am pleased to present to you tonight the 2019 budget and property tax levy. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to solicit public input on the budget and the property tax levy, and it's a requirement by state law, and it must be held after property owners have received their property tax statement. And Hennepin County had sent out the property notices around November 13th of this year. Some of the highlights that we're going to be covering in the presentation tonight are the 2019 city budget is proposed at $50 million, which is a 2.9% increase over last year. The tax levy is proposed at $36.3 million, which is a 2.7% increase. Our market value for the year is at $10.6 billion, which is a 4.1% increase. And our adjusted net tax capacity is at $112, $112.5 million, which is a 5.5% increase. And our city tax rate for this year is 31.53%, which is a decrease of 0.81%. So as you know, we prepare a two-year budget, and so this is the second year of the two-year budget, and so the 2019 budget numbers you have seen last year, but it's a requirement of state that we bring the budget forward every year and get approval on it, and so tonight we'll be asking for approval on that. And so for 2019, we are proposing a city budget of $50 million, again, which is a 2.9% increase, of which the general fund is $47 million, which is a 2.9% increase. And the debt levy is at $2.5 million, which we're able to keep flat. And the capital levy is at $400,000, which is a $100,000 increase, which Sue Kachiver will talk about later in this meeting. So for the general fund revenues, we're proposing a $47.1 million, which is a 2.9% increase. Taxes are at $34.6 million, which is a 3% increase. Licenses and permits are at 3.8, which consists mainly of building permits, and we're keeping that relatively flat. And we're able to do that because every other year we increase our fees, and we were able to increase the fees by 6% last year. Intergovernmental revenue is flat at 1.3%, and that consists mainly of police and fire pension aid. And charges for services are at $6.2 million, which is an increase of $238,365, which is mainly attributed to an increase in membership fees at the community center. And other revenue is at $702,000, and transfers at $404,599. As you can see from this chart, taxes make up the majority of our revenues at 73%, and the charges for services are at 13%. Licenses, 8%. Intergovernmental revenue, 3%, other at 2%, and then transfers at 1%. So for 2019, we were able to bring forward a balanced budget, which means the general fund expenditures of $47.1 million equal the general fund revenues. And so our expenditures are expected to increase by 2.9%. Administration is decreasing by approximately $52,000, which is mainly due to it being a non-election year. And then all the other departments are increasing around the 3%. And the city provides significant services to the community, and our budget, about 62% of our budget is made up of wages and benefits. And so if you look at the increase of $1.3 million, approximately $900,000 of that increase is attributed to wages and benefits. And that increase does include a 3% increase for base increase, step increases, and performance pay. It also includes a 5% increase for health insurance, and a 0.75% increase for the PERA for police and fire. So this next slide just breaks it down by the different departments. Police is at 32% of the expenditures, parks at 27, fire at 14, public works at 13, administration at 9%, and then community development at 5%. So for our debt levy, again, we were able to keep that flat at $2.5 million, and we were able to attain that by some of our bonds, the 2008 and the 2009 equipment certificates being retired in 2018, and then offsetting that decrease was an increase in the 2014 tax abatement bonds. So for 2019, we are proposing a $36.3 million property tax levy, which is a 2.7% increase. The general fund is at $35.3 million, which is a 3% increase. Capital improvement is at $400,000, and then the debt levy at 2.5. And then offsetting that property tax levy is the fiscal disparities, so bringing it down to the $36.3 million. So this next slide shows just the city tax impact on the property within the city. And so the median value home for 2019 is $396,200. And so that property would see just for the city portion, a tax of $1,276, or an increase of $15. Last year, that median value home was at $378,100. An apartment valued at $5 million would have a city tax impact of $20,106, or a $700 increase. A commercial property valued at $2 million would have a tax impact of $8,005, or a $40 So this next slide is the total property tax, which includes the state, the county, the school, and the city and other taxing districts. For a residential property, the total tax would be $5,082, which is a $106 increase. For apartments, it would be, they'd have a total tax of $77,558, or a $3,459 increase. And for commercial property, they would see a tax of $67,065, or they would see a decrease then of $1,412. And part of the reason for the decrease is the market value for commercial property only increased by 0.8% this year, whereas the, this, the residential market value increased by 3.6%, and apartments increased by 6.4%. And another factor contributing to that decrease is the change in fiscal disparities and the state general tax. So as you can see from this slide, for a median value home, the city only receives 25% of the taxes, whereas the Hennepin County and the school district each receive 34%, and then other districts receive 7%. For a commercial property, the city only receives 12%. Fiscal disparities receives 31%, the state 23, the county 16, the school 15, and others And others, 3 percent. So for a residential property, the monthly cost of city services would be $106.33. Of that amount, $106.06 would go to the general fund, and $6.20 would go to the debt and capital fund. Last year, the median value home paid $105.08. Compared to this year, the median value home would see an increase of $1.25 or 1.2 percent increase. So for the $106.06 of monthly cost of city services to the general fund, the police department would receive $32.02. Parks would receive $26.82. Fire, $13.50. Public Works, $12.92. Administration, $9.48. And then Community Development, $5.32. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tammy did a great job of providing some of that detail within the budget, in the budget detail. I'm going to talk a little bit about some goals, initiatives, comparisons, and impacts really quickly as I wrap up. Tammy mentioned the schedule. This is actually a two-year schedule. It's a two-year budget. It goes all the way back to kind of goal-setting and surveying of the community, and we're going to be embarking on that in early 2019 as we prepare our '20 and '21 budget. So we're already getting ready for next year and the year after. But in the current year, you can see that quite a bit of time was spent with city council and workshop and meetings discussing the results of the previous year and looking forward to this year. So you've received a lot of this material previously. And then also, in our packet, there's more detail in the packet for this meeting on the proposed budget, if you want to look there. If you look at the goals for the budget, they mirror what are the goals for our community as a whole. It was approximately three years ago that the city council updated and slightly altered our overall, we call them overarching, city goals. So we've got community well-being and safety, providing high-quality, efficient services, maintaining a preserved and beautiful environment in Eden Prairie, building our sense of community, always looking for innovative and sustainable practices, and increasing our economic fatality. So we actually put together work plans, and our work plans on all of our strategies, we have several hundred strategies throughout the city, are all under one of these goals. And this budget is a result of that. When you talk about the goals simply related to this budget, this may seem like a somewhat boring slide, but I think it's probably one of the most important slides in the entire presentation, and that is the bottom line of providing a high-quality city service at a very reasonable tax. If there is one sentence about what this budget does, it is that. And it's also maintaining a very strong financial position in our city. We have the highest bond rating anyone in the United States could receive. We have a fully balanced budget. That hasn't always been the case in years past. At the end of the year, we've had a balanced budget, but we haven't always started the year with a balanced budget. Maintaining our fund balance policies, estimating our revenues conservatively and our expenditures so we don't go over budget, and reviewing all of our fees on a regular basis, and capital planning, which you'll see. Also, we focused quite a bit in the last few years on enhancing our sense of community. So this budget reflects our engagement that we want to do, but also some of our initiatives in public art, in our monument signs, our promoting our historic properties, and continuing to enhance and create new city events. We also continually review all of our programs and all of our operations to make sure they're being done efficiently and that they're saving money. So in particular, we've embarked on a sustainable Eden Prairie program, and that alone is a two-hour presentation on all of our practices related to energy, waste, water conservation, creating a natural habitat. We are always looking for new technology solutions for document management, business licensing, and being a 24/7 virtual city hall. So we have several projects related to that. And then you'll see the two-year budget, then, this is a reflection from '18 and '19. I wanted to go back and show the budget and levy approved for the current year we're in and what we're proposing. Tammy discussed that. And when you look to the surrounding communities, or communities of similar size, I can only see maybe one or two communities that are proposing a lower tax levy than Eden Prairie is for the current year. So that's something we've been very competitive with. And when you look at the slides, a little tough to read, but when you actually look at the city tax paid in those comparable communities and suburbs of similar size, we are the fourth lowest city tax in that group. So in the lower, you know, 15%, 20%, and I think at all three of the cities actually that are below us right now have tax levies proposed that are higher than ours for the coming year. I can't say where we're going to end up next year, but we're maintaining a very, very competitive position in relation to our peers. And as Tammy mentioned as well, we've rebounded, I would say rebounded, because you can see the map there, coming out of the recession of 2009, 2010, where our actual property, citywide property values were decreasing. We're now looking at our second consecutive year of our worth as a community being more than $10 billion. And that has an effect on keeping taxes down as well, because you've seen this slide before, that our tax rate, as you saw, is decreasing. So what that means is even though that median-valued home sees a $15 or a 1.2 percent increase, if the value of the home went up 3.5 percent, I think it was, that Tammy said, well, if the home value goes up 1 percent or 2 percent, your taxes actually will go down. So that median value change is reflective of a 3.5 percent increase, and your value is still only a 1.2 percent increase in your tax. So taxes could still go down on a number of properties. And there are a few other factors I want to mention. As a community, Eden Prairie does not receive local government aid. Tammy mentioned how we get some police and fire pension aid, but many cities in the state of Minnesota receive direct dollars from the state of Minnesota to buy down their levy. We do not. We also participate, all cities in the seven-county metro area participate in a tax-based sharing program, and Tammy mentioned that in terms of what a commercial property pays in taxes is, actually, the 12 percent amount to the city is low because there's actually a state portion or a fiscal disparities portion that is paid, and it's a very convoluted formula. But the bottom line is, if that program, that tax-based sharing program, did not exist, and a program of which were the number-three contributor toward, the median-valued home tax would be 7.2 percent less. So for transparency purposes, there's a tax-based sharing program that's occurring throughout the metro, and Eden Prairie is actually paying into that. And so finally, to wrap up, the outcome, again, is a high level of service to our residents with public safety, parks and recreation, public works, community development, administration, to maintain that high level of service that we have. And we really feel, once again, that the 2019 budget is, has a very modest increase in the budget, very competitive modest increase in the levy, but not a single compromise in any service levels to the community. So with that, Mayor, I believe we do need to hold a public hearing, but we can certainly answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions of staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this? Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution certifying the 2019 property tax levy to be $38,278,724, and approve the 2019 budget of $50,54,720, as reviewed by the council, and approve the HRA tax levy and budget of $200,000.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. The motion passes. Next, we have the first and second readings of an ordinance approving the 2019 fee schedule for administration of official controls and resolutions approving summary. Mr. Getchell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. The other item that we need to do before the end of the year is to approve all of our different fees for 2019. And so the first public hearing are fees that are adopted by ordinance. So we ask that, it needs unanimous approval for a first and second reading for adopting fees by ordinance. And these fees are related to building permit fees or building code fees, for the most part. And I'll talk about the other types of fees in the next schedule, but you could see in the packet, each individual fee is laid out line by line.
Is there going to be a presentation on this?
There is not.
Okay. All right. Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the fee schedule?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first and second readings of ordinance updating the fee schedule for the administration of official controls and adopt resolution approving the summary for publication.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. The motion passes. The final public hearing is a resolution approving the 2019 fee schedule for city services. Mr. Getchell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. This doesn't require a public hearing. These are fees by resolution, but we've decided that all of our fees, we publish and provide public hearing for. And so in the case of fees by resolution, again, you will see all these line by line in the packet. These are park and recreation fees for programs, community center membership, certain business license fees, administrative fees, city facility rental fees. So you'll see those vary anywhere from no increase to 1% or 2% or 3% increase. Staff evaluates all fees on their own merit and does comparisons to similar fees, but these are various fees by resolution.
Okay. Any questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the 2019 fee resolution? No? Okay, is there a motion?
Move to close the public hearing and adopt the 2019 fee resolution.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. The motion passes. Next item is payment of claims. Is there a motion for approval of the payment of claims as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tyra Lukens?
Aye.
Next, we have the approved, request to approve the second reading of an ordinance amending City Code Section 5.35 relating to tobacco and adopt the resolution approving summary ordinance. Mr. Getchell?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On November 13th, at our last meeting, you approved the first reading of an ordinance amending the City Code related to tobacco, and that was to raise the minimum purchase at which a person can purchase tobacco products in the city of Eden Prairie from age 18 to 21. That does not relate to possession. That's a sale of tobacco by retailers in our community. So I think it's both at previous workshops and at that November meeting, the police chief has provided presentations in the past. We did not plan on providing another presentation, and typically, second reading is either on consent or, you know, simply acted upon at the next meeting. However, we did provide notice to all of our retailers about both the November meeting and this meeting, and stated at both of the meetings, the council would take public input on this issue, but tonight it would be action to adopt a second reading. And then, as you know from all the previous discussions, the ordinance usually becomes effective following publication. In this case, the ordinance is set up not to be effective until February 1st of 2019 to give retailers a necessary time to update any of their software programs or their training that they would need.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff on this? Is there anybody from the audience that wants to address the council on this ordinance? Sure, if you'd come up to the podium and give your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Donna Chikad. My address is 9626 Marshall Road. And I know you've had some other residents speak, so I just thank you for the opportunity to add another voice to it. So, good evening, Mayor Tyra Lukens and city council members. My name is Donna Chikad, and I live at, said already, 9626 Marshall Road in EP. My husband and I moved to Minnesota from New York 18 years ago, and we've been Eden Prairie residents ever since. We intentionally chose the Eden Prairie community to raise our two kids, who are both recent Eden Prairie High School graduates. And I'm here tonight as a resident, and most importantly, as a concerned parent to express my strong support for raising this tobacco sales age to 21 in our community. My son talks about how quite a few of his high school peers use tobacco products, including e-cigarettes that come in a crazy array of fruit and candy flavors like cherry, banana, sour apple, yummy gummy, and blue raspberry slushy. And I'm watching close friends struggle with how to help their own high school-aged sons and daughters that are addicted to e-cigarettes. These are kids who would never even consider smoking a conventional cigarette. Several of my son's peers began vaping in high school attracted to the cool look of the Juul, which is now the most popular e-cigarette used by teens. Many of these kids insist that Juuling, as it's called, is just harmless, flavoring in order, and not dangerous like cigarettes. I was really startled to learn just how dangerous and addictive the Juul and other e-cigarettes really are. They're not safe for young people, given that they have huge amounts of nicotine in them. One Juul pod has as much nicotine as an entire pack of cigarettes. The power and influence of social media, advertisers, and the beautiful colors, styles, and flavors of the e-cigarettes are such a heady combination that, of course, our kids are using them in staggering numbers. I mean, have you even seen what they look like? They're really cool-looking and so deceptively marketed to be incredibly alluring and appealing to our youth that what child wouldn't want to try them. I'm proud that you, our community leaders, are doing what it takes to protect our children from these dangerous products right now, and I strongly believe that one of the most effective ways to do it is by raising the legal tobacco sales age from 18 to 21. Our kids' futures depend on it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Molly Moilenen, and I work for Clearway Minnesota. I'm also co-chair of Minnesotans for a Smoke-Free Generation. We are a coalition of over 30 organizations that share a common goal of saving Minnesota youth from a lifetime of addiction. On behalf of the coalition and the city residents here in Eden Prairie, I want to thank your city staff for just being so phenomenal to work with. They have been responsive, transparent, and friendly, and I just want to let you know that's not always the case, and we really appreciate it. I live just north of here in Minnetonka, Minnesota. Minnetonka became Minnesota's 12th Tobacco 21 City on September 17th. And since then, Excelsior, Lauderdale, Hermantown, Otter Tail County, Brooklyn Center, and Mendota Heights have all voted in favor of Tobacco 21. There are Tobacco 21 public hearings taking place later this month in Pope County and Wasika. Minnesotans all across the state are asking their elected officials to choose the health and the future of our kids over the profits of a deadly industry. Now, our coalition is working really hard to pass a statewide Tobacco 21 bill at the Capitol. We want to protect all Minnesota kids, regardless of their zip code, their school district, their legislative district. And we've made good progress over the past two legislative sessions, but I want you to know we still have an uphill fight. We've never received a hearing in the House or the Senate, and unfortunately, the tobacco industry still has significant influence at the Capitol. As discussed at your meeting last month, please don't wait for the legislature to act. Eden Prairie should do it now, and that will help us pass a statewide policy. I hope you will move this policy forward tonight so we can continue the statewide momentum and really hope for a statewide Tobacco 21 bill to make it all the way to the finish line in this coming session, and if not this session, in a couple of years to come. But it's going to take local leadership like this, so thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Is there anybody else? I'm just wondering if there is anybody else that's against this ordinance that would like to speak? I'm not hearing anyone. Counsel, do you want to continue hearing, or does somebody want to make a motion?
I think I'm ready to make a motion, as we heard extensive testimony last time.
Okay.
Move to approve the second reading of an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 5, Section 5.35 relating to tobacco.
Second.
Any discussion?
I guess my only discussion would be the same things, same points that I raised last time. My concerns are that as someone achieves the age of 18, they can serve in the military, they can vote, they can buy a house, they can get married, and so I...
And so I think that we're treating people differently, and I think that has unintended consequences on our stores, because people stop to gas up their car, they go in and buy different treats and food at gas stations when they buy tobacco products. If you do this, then they're just going to go to our surrounding communities like Janhassen or the next neighboring. And so you change their retail habits. I don't think it'll change their habits, but it'll just change in terms of buying tobacco. It'll just change where they shop. And so I'm really in favor of doing this at a statewide level, so we don't create little islands of areas where people can't purchase them. But I'd like to see it done at a statewide level, and I think that's really where it would be most effective, because I am very much against smoking. Not that my voice sounds like I smoked for all of my life tonight, but I've never smoked. Yeah, so that's my comments.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Case?
Just trying to see if I could read some notes here. Brad, I really do appreciate the concern for businesses. I think we all do. I think in a case like this, when you look at like a certain, you try to put a certain dollar amount onto what our 23 tobacco-selling businesses might lose, and compare that to a certain dollar amount that society will have to bear, not even to mention the individual that might get cancer and have to go through that whole turmoil with their family. But, and I did this really fast, I hope no one keeps me to the exact numbers or even my assumptions, but just maybe stay with me for a little bit, just with the idea. But let's just say there's, in our school systems, I know there's more than this, but 500 kids in a class, so 500 18-year-olds, 19-year-olds, 20s, so 1,500 kids, young adults, I'm an ex-teacher, but young adults. When you have them as 12-year-olds, they're kind of kids forever, but young adults, 20% of those by statistics will become smokers, that's 300. One-seventh of them will become addicted and get cancer of a serious smoker, one or two packs a day. That's 100 times higher than non-smokers that will get lung cancer. So I went with the number that about 43, and those are real human beings, of our Eden Prairie young adults will potentially suffer from cancer. Based on an average patient cost of around $50,000, that's about $2 million. Now, if you take the 23 establishments that sell nicotine, I went out on Google and made some guesses as to what they gross in a week on cigarettes, and this is incredibly variable here, but about $9,000. They make a 10% margin on that if you figure out that, $9,000 a week, but if you do the 10% that they make, that's 900 a week, 3,600 a month, assuming that 5% of that will go towards the 18, 19, 20-year-olds. Multiply that out, 2,160 a year by the 23, you get to about $2 million in costs to society, but $50,000 in a loss to these businesses cumulatively across the year. Now, I know my numbers are messed up, and it's a lot of assumptions, but the point is that, here's my point. The cost can't just be the businesses on a few thousand dollars. The cost is, to be fair, is everything, and not just the millions of dollars that will be laid, needed to be spent by society and individuals and insurance companies, but the tremendous toil and turmoil on those individuals and families. So if we get the chance, on balance, to assist and help and facilitate and incentivize some of our young adults not to start to smoke, all the shirts that all of you are wearing in green out there is a statistic I've read many times, 95% of all smokers started before they were 21. So if we can get in on that, and that's what we have to do across society if we're going to help solve our healthcare issue, by the way, or our costs and expenses, is to try to proactively get in on the four major causes of chronic disease, of which smoking is. So to me, this is a no-brainer. And then the one argument, and I know you went there a little bit, but the idea that, and I heard about this, I hurt H-U-R-T about this, that people can go and risk their lives and fight and die for me overseas, but they come, or anywhere, but they come back here as ex-military, and in some cases, some communities are trying to prevent them from buying a gun, or they can't buy alcohol, or they can't smoke. I get that. I think we should change it so you don't go into the military until 21. That's another way of dealing with it. But I think my answer for that in terms of their health is that I, and all of us, we care about our military veterans, too. We care about everybody. We care about our 18, 19, 20-year-olds. Sometimes it's not a case of just the freedom, and I know I'm going to irritate motorcycle drivers now, but just that's a possibility or thought to think about, too, is that we care about people in terms of the helmet law, right? I mean, we haven't passed that in Minnesota, but there's all kinds of laws out there that we look at to help people make healthier decisions. That's not a bad thing for government to be getting into. So I, okay, I digress on other areas, but I just completely support this. I just wanted to counter just a couple of your arguments. I'd be more than happy to hear.
Well, I guess one of the, I understand that. I guess one of the things I would just say is that when you're calculating the cost, I don't think it's the cost, I don't think the retailers make a lot of money on selling tobacco products. What they make money on is when you go to the grocery store. You're going to go to the grocery store that also sells the tobacco products, so you're going to buy all your groceries there. You're going to go to the gas station, you're going to buy gas. When you go into the gas station to purchase tobacco products, you're also going to buy a soda, you're going to buy a, you know, a treat, and it's all those things that, it's really the unintended consequence of people not purchasing from our retailers.
I get that.
And if it was really effective, and if it was going to stop people from smoking, I'd be all for it, because I'm very against smoking, but I just don't think it's effective.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes. Thank you all for coming. Our final item here is a first reading of an ordinance amending city code chapter 3 relating to water emergencies. I understand this is pretty much housekeeping?
Very much so, Mayor and city council members. It updates the city code to address when the governor declares a water emergency, a critical water emergency. So we want our code to be in line with state protocol regarding governor calling a water emergency.
Any questions of staff regarding this? Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending city code chapter 3 relating to water emergencies.
You make me want to just make sure that I go second. I just try to match, because otherwise, you know, my voice will sound really high.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. All right. The next thing is our city manager's performance review. Mr. Getcho was hired, I believe, in March or April of the year that he started, and so we'd kind of been doing our performance reviews on a little different schedule, but this year, we decided to wait till the end of the year. It made more sense to do it as this council moves on, rather than once the first of the year comes and we have two new council members that haven't worked with you. So we've done the city manager performance review the last few months, and we met in closed session prior to our meeting tonight to discuss his performance and make a decision on his compensation. And I'd just like to report that we evaluated in closed session the performance of the city manager. The city manager gave a self-evaluation of his performance, and this included his role in doing the budget and the delivery of services, the city's AAA bond rating, his continued employee engagement, work plan, and employee survey, working to empower employees, encouraging a sense of community projects, event planning, monument signs, his work on Aspire, the 2040 Plan, key involvement in negotiations with Shields Department Store and the Elevate Project, bringing the city government academy as a new initiative which inspires a great sense of community programming. Finally, Sustainable Eden Prairie, he's done a lot of work to promote our interest as a council in energy conservation, solar projects, water conservation, waste hauling, et cetera. We have evaluated his performance as very innovative, his leadership in keeping tax rates low, his work on the sustainability initiative, all very much appreciated by this council. His work is thorough and comprehensive. He provides strong leadership to our staff. He provides an open and involved place for employees to work. He's personable, knowledgeable, and creative. He's upfront when he doesn't know an answer to a question. He's very willing to say so and get the answer for us promptly. He's been an exemplary city manager every year that he's worked for us. He just gets better and better. And so for 2018, we are doing kind of a retroactive 1% salary increase to bring his salary from 176,000, or to 176,823 for 2018. Incidentally, that is the cap that we are able to pay based upon legislation that restricts us to what the governor's salary is. For 2019, we will be increasing his salary 2.5% on top of his salary for 2018, so that would be $181,243. Again, that is the anticipated cap for city employees. We also plan to award him 30 hours of paid time off that goes into a dedicated account of PTO that cannot be converted to cash until the point where he leaves his employment with the city. At that point, is the only point where he has access to that dollar amount. So congratulations on yet another year, or in this case, since it's been about a year and a half since we did the last performance review. Thank you for another year and a half of excellent work, and I hope you enjoy working for us as much as we enjoy having you as an employee.
I do, thank you.
And for those who don't know, the city manager is the only person in the city that the council hires or fires. Mr. Getcho, did you want to, I mean, Mr. Russell, did you want to add anything?
Yes, you need a motion.
Oh, yes, we need a motion. Does somebody want to read it? Do you want to read it, Brad? Okay.
Do you have a motion on here?
Well, it's not there is a motion, but you could make a motion out of it. That topic, period.
So I would move the salary numbers. Is that all that is necessary to move at this time?
You would move these.
Can I just remove everything she said?
Yes. The last part of it was the retroactive increase for 2018.
Right.
And then the increase of 2.5%.
Got it.
Plus the 30 hours of PTO.
Okay. So for 2018, award a 1% increase retroactive to bring his salary to 176,823. For 2018, for 2019, increase his salary to 181,243, which is a 2.5% on top of his salary for 2018. In addition, award him 30 hours of PTO that go into a dedicated account that cannot be converted to cash until which time he would leave employment with the city.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. The last item tonight is a resolution approving the 2019 to 2028 capital improvement plan, the CIP. Mr. Getcho.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. Our last item, every other year, we update our 10-year plan. So our finance manager, Sukh Kachiver, does have a presentation on our 10-year capital improvement plan, and we ask that you then adopt a resolution approving that plan.
All right. I am pleased to present the 2019-2028 Capital Improvement Plan. So, the purpose of the meeting is to provide information to Eden Prairie citizens, so the whole document was included in the council packet for folks to review that wanted to, and it's a time to provide any feedback on the plan. And after the meeting, we'll be asking the council to adopt the plan. And the objective of the plan is to plan for capital improvement, and it's a, it is a planning tool. And so every project, once the details are figured out, it comes forward to the city council as a contract. So every project is approved once again by the city council. It provides consistent investment in equipment, facilities, and infrastructure, and it preserves and expands capital in a way that is sustainable and affordable. And we have some policies that guide us when we're doing capital improvement planning. We only want to issue, as far as debt goes, we only want to issue debt if we don't have the current revenues to pay for a project, and we also only want to issue debt no longer than the life of a project. We want to maintain good relationships with our bond rating agencies. We have the best rating possible from Standard and Poor's and Moody's Investor Services, which allows us to go into the market and get the lowest increase possible. We maintain the plan. We update it every two years, and liquor profits is a dedicated funding source for the plan. So this is a summary of the capital improvement plan, and the value is very similar to the last capital improvement plan update. The last update, it was 276 million. This time, it's 281 million, which is a 1.8% increase, so it's a very similar dollar amount. As you can tell from the pie chart, transportation leads the way at 185,000, so we put a lot of resources into transportation projects in the city. And if you combine that with the utility infrastructure of water and sewer, that is about 220 million of the 280 million of the capital improvement plan. And some of the other larger areas are park and recreation at 17.5 million, facilities at 14.2, and fire at 12.6 million. And this is a summary of all the various funding sources for the capital improvement plan, and again, about 80% is for transportation and utility projects. Some of the larger funding areas are the pavement management fund at 46,600,000, and that's primarily the franchise fees, and then also some municipal state aid is put into that fund. The Minnesota Department of Transportation is 41.2 million. Municipal state aid is 33.8 million. And then you've got the county, 12.1 million. Special assessment, 8.7 million. So a lot of funds going into the transportation, and then also the water fund has 27 million in projects and storm drainage, 16.6 million. And then the other thing I would just point out is the capital maintenance and reinvestment fund. So that's the fund that pays for projects that don't have another funding source. It's a lot of park and recreation programs, projects, a lot of public safety projects. And the money that goes into that fund is rental income, especially from this building, liquor profit, the tax levy that Tammy was talking about for $400,000 a year, antenna revenue, and we tend to put other one-time revenue into that fund. So for example, if the general fund has positive operating results, and we don't need the funds to maintain our fund balance, we tend to transfer that money into the capital improvement and maintenance fund. So just a summary of some of the larger projects in the fund for the next couple years. You can see the list of transportation projects up there. The largest project up there is Flying Cloud Drive reconstruction at $20 million, and that's mainly a Minnesota Department of Transportation-funded. The rest of the projects on there are primarily funded by municipal state aid, and the smallest project down there is Duck Lake Road for 2.5 million. We also have some substantial utility infrastructure in the CIP. Next year, we expect to put in a ground storage reservoir and pump station. That's about an $8 million project. We plan to issue about $4 to $5 million worth of debt, and the rest will be paid out of water access fees. Also, over the next 10 years, about four new wells could potentially be built, and those are also be paid out of water access fees. For pavement management, we maintain about 234 miles of city streets, overlays, seals, coats, that sort of thing, and also reconstruction. So there's about 23.2 million invested in just the maintenance, and about 13.5 in reconstruction over the next 10 years. And then parks and recreation, one of the larger projects in there is next year, we're going to be doing the Starling Lake Park structure reconstruction. That's a $950,000 project. That's the picture on the right is an example of what that's going to look like, and that's going to be paid out of the park improvement. going to be paid out of the Park Improvement Fund. And then the other projects listed there are paid for out of the Capital Improvement and Maintenance Fund, so that's a lot of maintenance of our park, play equipment replacement, trail maintenance, hard court maintenance, and then funds for new trails and sidewalks. And then for public safety, there's funds in there to replace the self-contained breathing apparatus twice over the 10-year period, radio replacement. Also, we'll be replacing six fire engines and one tower truck over the next 10 years, and debt is planned for those projects, starting in 2022, and then also the mobile command center truck for police. And then the last area is facilities and information technology, so money is spent on building restoration, primarily for the 13 main buildings of the city. There's $8 million budgeted for a police remodel project in 2025 that we'll issue debt for. Also funds for roofs, boilers, those sorts of things for our buildings. In information technology, it's internal, external network work, and then also there's funds for a police mobile computer system replacement. And then lastly, just a summary of our bond rating, like we've been talking, we receive a AAA bond rating from Moody's since 2003, and Standard and Poor's since 2014, and that's just attributable to Eden Prairie's strong economy. We have strong budget flexibility and good budget reserves, strong budget performance. We have very strong liquidity, so we have access to cash if we need it. We have very strong management conditions and good policies that are good, and a strong debt with a loan debt, and debt that'll be paid off in a timely manner. So it's about 17 cities in Minnesota that have that rating, or about 7% nationally. That's what I got.
All right, any questions for Ms. Achiv? Not hearing any. Is there a motion on this? No, I don't see one.
Yes.
Oh, I don't have it. Oh, yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Move to adopt the resolution approving the 2019-2028 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second. Any anything to discuss? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Okay, any other business?
Yes, Your Honor, just one.
Okay.
I don't get to do a whole lot as acting mayor, but I get to do something tonight. We didn't get the chance to actually vote or pass, but I think by consensus we did, a proclamation, so I'm going to read a proclamation. Got a lot of whereas's in there, because you've been here a long time. Whereas, Mayor Nancy Terrell-Loukens served the city of Eden Prairie as council member from 1994 through 2001, and as mayor from 2002 through 2006, and 2010 through 2018. And whereas, Mayor Nancy Terrell-Loukens served as Eden Prairie's mayor for 13 years, which makes her the longest-serving mayor in the city's history. And whereas, Mayor Nancy Terrell-Loukens represented Eden Prairie on more than 20 commissions, boards, and task forces during her two decades of public service. And whereas, Mayor Nancy Terrell-Loukens led Eden Prairie to enact one of the first municipal smoking bans in the state. And whereas, Mayor Nancy Terrell-Loukens advocated for the city council's adoption of a resolution declaring Eden Prairie to be a healthy eating and active living community, and established the mayor's Health and Wellness Committee to help the city develop health and wellness strategies and initiatives. And whereas, Mayor Nancy Terrell-Loukens served on the Southwest Transit Commission for 20 years, leading the bus service to become one of the top transit agencies in the United States, for which she was honored with its Distinguished Service Award. And whereas, Mayor Nancy Terrell-Loukens signed the mayor's commitment to action on climate protection, which led her to establish the city's Conservation Commission, launched the successful 2040-15 initiative, and current Sustainable Eden Prairie efforts, and led the city council to adopt a resolution supporting the Paris Agreement. And whereas, Mayor Nancy Terrell-Loukens championed Eden Prairie's Southwest Light Rail Transit priorities, and was instrumental in negotiating a plan that resulted in sacrificing elements of the line in Eden Prairie to ensure the entire project would move forward for the greater good. And whereas, Mayor Nancy Terrell-Loukens has exhibited grace and a style of leadership that has endeared her to all facets of society, a steady, fair, positive, collaborative, and humble style that should serve as an example to current and future leaders for years to come. And whereas, Mayor Nancy Terrell-Loukens never missed an opportunity to publicly express her appreciation for city employees, and personally attended the majority of employee recognition events during her tenure as mayor to show her genuine gratitude in person. And now therefore, be it resolved. Nancy's like, yes. That Mayor Nancy Terrell-Loukens is recognized for her leadership and vision as a council member and mayor, which have contributed to Eden Prairie's reputation for outstanding levels of service and achievement that serve as a benchmark other communities strive for. And further, the Eden Prairie City Council does hereby proclaim December 18, 2018, as Mayor Nancy Terrell-Loukens Day, and Jeff, you write that one down. I think you'll expect special things that day, in the city of Eden Prairie, and asks, now all of you out there who listen to this, but also either listening on tape, or hopefully the newspapers will pick this up, because we're inviting the community. The community is asked to, or to be invited to join us in thanking Mayor Nancy Terrell-Loukens for her public service on Tuesday, December 18, in the Garden Room, city center, from 5 to 8, a special program at 6:30. We're trying to get a number of the people that might be coming, so you might want to call in to City Hall, but do just show up, otherwise we'd like to have you there. So this has been adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council this fourth day of December 2018.
Thank you, thank you, that's very nice.
You're not in charge yet, almost.
Oh, I'm not in charge yet, okay.
Quite yet, I'm taking it away just for a few more moments. Would anyone else, Brad or Kathy, like to add any personal comments?
I do have a couple of comments. I'd like to thank you for the way that you've always encouraged people to be involved in the city, and thank you specifically for encouraging me to run for the council, which I might not have thought to have done it, but I hadn't been for you. You've had a long history of visiting businesses, your bus and light rail and transportation, but what I've appreciated most is that you seem to see needs of the community earlier than many other people, and you focus on what Eden Prairie could be, not just what it is, and that has made a true difference to the community. You're nice, you attend events, and you've left a strong legacy for Eden Prairie, and I thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate it.
I'll make a few comments, but it's hard, I can't talk very long. Anyway, I just really thank you for all of your service and your leadership and your insight. I think you have a very good insight into what Eden Prairie wants, and what the voters need and want, and I appreciate that you're very perceptive in being able to see that and to read that and to deliver that. And so I think it's been, you've left a good legacy of Eden Prairie, and you can be very proud of your service, and I just thank you for listening to everyone and being...
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I do have a couple...
Now can I say something? Oh, okay.
Almost.
Okay.
Just have a couple comments. Nancy's in my history goes back to the 1994 campaign. I don't know that I probably had met you prior to that, but I got to know you during that time. You and I won our seats from a crowded field of 11 candidates. You quickly, you came in first. You quickly established yourself as an incredibly engaged and prepared and thoughtful council member. And then you were, you and I didn't vote separately very many times, but the times we did is when you were an ardent supporter of almost never-changing pre-guiding in the zoning ordinances and people's expectations. Not that I do that myself, but you were rock solid, and I appreciate that. And as the proclamation displayed so well, you supported causes that benefited people. So I always think of this, and you're thinking government was there to help people, regulations, rules, governance, was all okay if it benefited the people we served and made their lives better. I think you and I pretty much single-handedly stopped toll roads from coming into Eden Prairie, at least so far, the last 25 years, HOV lanes notwithstanding. We've been part of protecting trees and wetlands and bluffs, and that will be part of your legacy forever. You've always been for anything that might improve the health of our residents, the quality of life for people who live and work here, and for whatever will benefit future generations, which today can be for both of us so easily not just focused on our children, but also on our grandchildren, tangibly. Nancy Terrell-Loukens, you've made a difference. Eden Prairie is a much better place today because of your 20 years of service, seven years as council member, 13 years as mayor. On behalf of all residents of Eden Prairie, we deeply thank you and wish you the very best, and as you know oh so well, that there's a tradition across the United States that once you are a mayor, you're always a mayor, and that's true, so we will always be referring to you as Mayor Nancy Terrell-Loukens.
That's pretty cool, I didn't know I said that. Thank you, thank you. I want to make a few comments, and I will skip quite a bit of this, because a lot of this has been said, but I just want to say it's really been a great 20 years, and it's been 20 years of great change. Given that I started in 1994 and went through 2018 with a four-year break, we've seen our population almost double in that period of time, and we've seen our population change an awful lot. We've gotten older, we've gotten, as all parts of our country, we've gotten much more diverse. When council member Case and I started, we would get hard copy packets delivered to us on Friday afternoon by a policeman or some clerk, and we gradually shifted into computer packets. But even at the point that we switched into computer packets, I don't think we had any concept of the things that we'd be dealing with with social media here in 2018. Things have really changed a lot. And I've been very fortunate to be in a position to deal with all of this change, and you brought up a number of things in that resolution or that...
Proclamation.
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 Of things that I've done, or not that I've done, things that we've done, and largely it's been this group over the course of those years. I'd like to again thank city staff, they're truly amazing and really dedicated to our core values of collaboration, innovation, integrity, great high-performance standards, and their relationships with community members and other agencies around Eden Prairie. City staff implements the council's vision, and they really do an outstanding job making Eden Prairie a great place to live, work, and dream. One of my favorite honors bestowed on our city, other than best place to retire, best place to raise a family, best place to live, best beach town, is the accolade of being one of the best places to work in the whole state. We are the only city, the only municipality that makes the Star Tribune list of best places to work, and it's just, every time I see that, year after year, it just makes me feel really wonderful, because I appreciate the fact that a culture that people enjoy working in is a culture that can really deliver services for our residents, so I thank you. I also want to thank our current council, as I've thought back over my years, I've worked with six met council chairs, I've worked with five police chiefs, four different city managers, and over that 20 years, only 10 different city council members, and four, well, Sherry's not here tonight, but four of us from the last eight years have been almost half of that group of council members that I've worked with. And I've worked with you the longest, and I think you guys are by far the best. You're respectful, you're innovative, you listen to residents, you're open-minded, you're intelligent, you're dedicated, and it's been a pleasure to work with all of you. I hope you continue our efforts on energy conservation and efficiency, waste reduction, both internally and externally, work on that climate energy plan, keep youth involved, they're very interested, and I think that's important. Continue to press the envelope on design of our public buildings that we build, and also on the commercial and retail that goes up around our city. It's sometimes hard to know what is good design, but it's one of those things, I know it when I see it. And I think that we have an opportunity, we're a wonderful city, businesses want to move here. If there's construction, let's make sure it's a beautiful building, that'll set us well for the future. Continue to protect our youth on things like tobacco and gun violence. Cicero said, "What society does to its children, so will its children do to society," and I think that's really true. We have to look at how we treat our children and make it clear that they are an important part of our society, and they will pass that on. Look at the opportunities provided by light rail. Continue to push on public art, plazas and trees, economic development, I hope you all get involved in 1 Million Cups and continue to do meet and greets. Budget and taxes, we've been doing a wonderful job, I think, through the years on that, but we need to recognize that there is going to be a time when we need to raise some taxes and do some reinvestment in our city. We need to keep being not just a viable city in terms of businesses and residents enjoying living here, but we also need to be aesthetically attractive, so we're a place that people want to move to, that helps everybody with their real estate values. And mostly, I want you to continue to lead rather than follow. I want to thank the residents who honored me with their support during my various election campaigns, and honored me by electing me to office, I'm very humbled to have their trust. Thanks to the residents who have volunteered to serve on our commissions and task forces, it's truly a valuable service that you provide to the city council when you do that. I also want to thank residents who, by the thousands, who are providing input to our city through the various electronic means that we have to solicit input on initiatives that the city is considering undertaking. A lot of what we did with our Aspire Plan, our comprehensive guide plan update, was done electronically with a lot of input from our residents, so thank you for that. Lastly, I want to thank my family, my sons and daughters, my sister who helped with every campaign, my husband who was so encouraging and supportive of what I was doing, I couldn't have done it without him. Thank you very much, it's been an honor. Thank you, I appreciate it. Any other business before the council?
I move adjournment.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.